So, good morning, everybody. Today is Saturday, December 10th, and this is a work session for the Anchorage School Board. Our members present in the boardroom, we have Member Higgins, Member Holloman, Member Wilson, Member Jacobs, Member Bellamy, Member Lessons has a slight delay. She had a mishap on the road this morning. She's fine, but she will join us within the hour. We also have our superintendent, Dr. Bryant, and we have Dr. Stock, along with several other administrative staff, including our own executive assistant, Amanda Foster. So, with that, we have an agenda in front of us. Today's work session is to give the board opportunities to consider, to think, to look at the options and to start, for us to start trying to figure out where each of us are relative to all of the recommendations. All of the options are on the table or will be on the table. We have designed an activity that we will have discussion around, and we will also have opportunities for board members to get more information, ask more questions, and all of that. So, relative to, there is coffee and refreshments over to my left. Everyone is welcome to those. And, Dr. Bryant, if you would like to make a few comments?
Sure, thank you, Madam President. Good morning and happy Saturday, board and members of the community. We look forward to this opportunity to come together as a group, really take a step back and conceptualize the bigger picture of how we'll address our $60-plus million structural deficit. So, Dr. Stock will run through the logistics of our activity in a minute, but in short, today is our opportunity to look at all the options on the table as Madam President shared. In front of you is a chart that you can use to explore a variety of options. We've attempted to distinguish between those actions that are short-term in nature and those that would result in a long-term impact on the district's expenditures. And lastly, as I've shared before, this activity isn't meant to be decisional, but hopefully it'll be a launching point to create dialogue and to ask questions that will help guide the decision-making process. Personally, as I participate in this activity myself, my eye will be on conceptualizing changes that will minimize the structural deficit for future fiscal years while also keeping in mind student outcomes and the classroom experience. So, with that, I'll pass it on to Dr. Stock.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My truck rolled over really slowly this morning, probably like most of you did crawling out of bed this morning. Thanks for coming. So, I wanted to start with the real short, brief look backwards because I think this is important. About, I don't know, four or five years ago, I've been here seven years, before the federal stimulus came, there were a variety of budget-cutting recommendations put forward. We didn't end up doing them, but we looked at a variety of things. Over the years, we've increased the PTR, which is our pupil-teacher ratio, which is a funding formula. We've increased that over the years. We looked at Ignite more than once. We looked at middle school scheduling more than once. We've looked at health teachers in the elementary.
Recording in progress.
So, we've looked at a variety of those things over the, and then the federal stimulus money came. And for at least a year now, the district has been discussing publicly this, the phrase you've heard is fiscal cliff. So, it's no surprise that by propping up many of those deficits made by deficit spending from inflation over all those years, you can see that where we're at. So, in July, we began in earnest. So, we've been through a six-month process of almost every board meeting rolling out piece by piece, different thoughts and recommendations. We've also had nine town halls, which are the public process. We've done surveys and all those things to bring us to today. And so, what today is, is just a concept, but it helps us explain how all of this comes together. So, there's really only three purposes for today. One is to begin this path forward to a balanced budget, which we will approve in February, hopefully. The other thing is to work with your colleagues to explore common ground because, you know, the gold standard would be if we have a consensus of all seven board members on a way forward, but at least the majority, right? We have to have a budget approved that has a particular strategy. So, what our activity is going to be, and just for any members of the public who wish to actually experience what the board is doing, there are four stations set up there. So, if anybody rolls in and wants to actually go through these cards, and I'm going to ask Kathy, who's Kathy's around here. She's going to pass around something. You can keep these in order. These are the cards that you're going to use. And I want to first start by explaining the posters. So, there's four sections. So, we have some funds. So, you have fund balance, and if you'll keep the envelopes in order, it'll be easier as I roll through them. Then there's the bond reimbursement, which they fall under this category of really theoretically, you can only spend these once. So, if we close our gap with everything on this side, then there's also the danger that what do we do the next year? On the reducing expenditures category, these are things that we can do that cut expenses that might be more sustainable over time. And at the bottom, you'll see two different charts. One says parking lot. And despite Andy's comment about what he thinks of parking lots and post-it notes, if you find things in here you just want to put over here and say, "I have no idea what I think about that yet." I'm just going to put it over here. Off the table means this is a cut or a one-time thing that you are not willing to apply to the deficit. And we'll go through that in a minute as an example. The goal, you'll see two totals. You'll see a red box that says grand total. The grand total we're after is 48 million. And to answer the question of where we're going from the 68 or so in July to the 48, there's also a sheet in front of you, just a reminder of what was briefed in the pro forma summary. So, this one-page sheet explains why the number you're after this morning is 48. So, that's where we're going. So, you'll take out the first card. So, unclip your envelopes there. The first card says fund balance. And when you open that up, you will see three cards. A fund balance of 10%, one says 9%, one says 8%. You can only play one of these because in reality, you can only play one card of these three because what you're saying is, how comfortable are you with how much cash we have? Our board policy says 8% is your minimum, and that's what we've always done. The reality is, you can go even lower with a supermajority of the board. You could go to seven, but you can't have all three fund balances. You can only use one of these. So, let's just for sake of argument, say you're going to stick with the past practice of the board, which is we're going to cut the fund balance back to 8%, which is our minimum. So, I'm going to put fund balance over there at 28.3 million. Okay? Now, there's some assumptions you can think about, okay? The reason the fund balance, what's that? The reason, the, um, the reason you could, one of the assumptions to think about with fund balance is this. The reason the fund balance has gotten so high, over 8%, is because we can't fill our positions. We've had 450 unfilled positions. If we were to have them all filled, you wouldn't have such a robust fund balance way over 8%. So, one of the assumptions you make is, I'm willing to put all that on and go back to 8% and apply 28 million to the deficit because my assumption is, we're going to have another healthy fund balance next year because we are still unable to fill all 450 open slots. So, I'm not worried about the fund balance dwindling in one year because we still have challenges with recruitment right now. So, you can only play one of those, so I'm going to drop my others on the parking lot. So, that's fund balance. How comfortable are you on fund balance? The next card envelope, pull that out. This one says state bond debt reimbursement. This has been a big topic in the public, and you all are aware that we've been using. And so, if you look, you'll see four cards. If you total them up, they represent 37 million, which is what we've been discussing. So, think of it like this. If you're a person that wanted to spend all of it and you're going to rebuild Inlet View and rebuild it as a new school, and you're going to take all 37 million and apply it to Inlet View, then that goes off the table. You can't use it for the deficit because you're going to save it for a school building. If you're going to do a remodel of Inlet View, that's 22.5 million. So, okay, I think we should save 10 million of it to bond reimbursement. I'm going to put the 27 over here, assuming inflation's going to drive the cost up eventually. So, there's 27 million off the table because that, in my mind, is remodeling Inlet View. Or somebody else might say, "I'm not going to put it on Inlet View at all, but I think that's capital project money. I think all of it's off the table because that was designed for capital projects, and that's deferred maintenance to me. I'm not spending any of it on the deficit." So, now I've got it all over here. And if you're a person that says, "I have no idea what to do with it." I'm going to park it for now until I think about it. So, that's two envelopes. Let's go to the next one. The next one is a little complicated to play the cards, but it's actually pretty simple in concept. So, if you pull it out, you're going to see six cards. I would just lay them out. So, you'll see three of them that say PTR plus one. And again, you can only play one or two of these cards on the PTR. So, now we're talking about things that reduce expenditures, not one-time funds. You'll notice these are red now. Think of it as reducing the debt, all right? So, all the red ones, they're not cash. These are things we got to do to cut expenses, right? So, a PTR plus one at K-12, that means I'm willing to raise the pupil-teacher ratio funding formula by one student for the whole district. So, I'm going to put it over here on reducing expenditures. Now, you may remember, Member Lessons brought up a question at a board meeting a while back. She said, "Can you layer these one on each other?" And like, well, technically, you could. For example, let's say you're willing to raise everyone one PTR, but at grades four through 12, you're willing to raise everyone another one. That would be two. So, I put those together. That would reduce the expenditures by 11 million because I see 7.1 in four. That's a sacrifice I'm willing to make. Or maybe you're like some folks who say, "I'm not willing to saddle our teachers with one more increase in their class sizes. That's off the table. I'm not doing it. Don't think we should really affect our students that way. We can get to zero or 48 some other way. I'm not doing it." So, then it's off the table. So, the next one is another hot. You can do one or two, or you could do more, but some of these, I refer to some of these as the nuclear option. Raising PTR five, K through 12, that is a nuclear option. That would send PTR through the roof. But if you want to know how much money those save and how that works and how many teachers that affects, one thing I should have brought out to you, you have what we call the little cheat sheet because these are hard to remember. So, you have with you this little packet. This little packet has the notes of everything I'm talking about on them, and you can kind of, you can go down and see under PTR adjustment options. You'll see two little graphs that the CFO provided for you. One side shows how many teachers that would not be working, who would, through attrition, not have jobs. It would, if we raised the PTR one for grades K-12, that would be overall 60 employees. And if you look at the amount, that would save 7.1 million, which is what you see on the card. Yes, Pat, question? So, that's an interesting question because where people get confused is PTR is a funding formula? It's just how we distribute the resources to buildings? But then within the building, they have to do class sizes. So, what you're saying is, yes, class size can go up because I might assign my staff by a basic PTR, but I might have a grade level with extra enrollment and a teacher that's missing. And we've experienced that a lot with our subbing situations where the actual number of students in the class can be higher because there's a missing teacher and no sub for a day or two or three. So, but from the PTR point of view, we're looking at this pretty high level as funding resources right now. But you are correct. There are, the effects of the classroom, how they're felt by teachers varies widely because even though the PTR might be the same across the district, that doesn't mean class sizes are the same. This is just how we distribute the FTE. So, the next one is also got a lot of public topic, probably more conversation than anything we've done or talked about, and that is the school closure folder. So, if you'll pull out the school closure folder, you'll see them in order, and I'll go through them. The first one says closing Abbott Loop, 1 million. By the way, the reason the numbers are a little different, I didn't want everybody to get confused and trying to add all these up in their head. So, they're all rounded to the nearest 100,000, and they're in fractions of a million. So, you can see closing Abbott Loop, 1 million. Closing CLAT, .8. Now, one thing for you to think about on CLAT, there is on your cheat sheet, you will see a section on school closures that has, in case you can't remember all those repurposing pieces, there's a section there that gives you what's going on with each of those schools in case you forget. And then there's some estimations for next year, what that would save for the next year. And you can go down the list. Close CLAT, Repurpose Birchwood, Repurpose Wander Park, Repurpose Northwood, Repurpose Nunnaca Valley. So, those are the totals that you see there. Now, if you're a person that's not willing to close any schools, then all of those get bundled up and they go off the table. Or if you're going, you know, I'm willing, I think we should close this one and this one, but I don't think we should close this one, then you're going to put two or three of them up here and the rest over here. The next folder is a collection of, and a lot of these include the educational programs that have all been under discussion. So, if you would pull out that envelope, this envelope in order that's in your cheat sheet, I'll start with the first one. One of the proposals that we haven't talked a lot about, it hasn't gotten a lot of fanfare, but most of you are aware of the, of our virtual program, ASDV, which was stood up during the pandemic. And we've seen the middle school, well, mostly the high school enrollment is really robust and strong. But ever since the pandemic is over, or roughly over, a lot of the elementary families have left it. Right now, the class sizes of the elementary are down to normal in-person numbers. We could, for 700,000, change that and not have ASDV in the elementary K-5. It would save 700,000, you can see. The next one on your list, go ahead. Change ASDV means to eliminate K-5, but it means the sixth through 12 program stays intact. We have about 2,500 students still in ASDV. All but 150 of them are in grades six through 12. There's only 150 in the elementary, and they have options. They have Family Partnership, they have Frontier, they have Padilla. There are ways for them to homeschool without necessarily being in this one. So, it would save 700 and would allow seven teachers to go to in-person teaching instead of virtual. It is an option. The next one says school admin operations. These are metric-based reductions. And on your cheat sheet, you will see that these, because our enrollment keeps dropping, we have a metric we use to apply to how many assistant principals, how many security guards, how many administrative assistants, secretarial-type positions. We have a metric for that. But as enrollment continues to decline, we've carried some of them because of all the extra workload these days since the pandemic. But we could save 300,000 with a handful of positions there by following our metric closer. The next one, district admin cuts. This is the one that has a lot of discussions the board has had around administration. You'll see your chart showing what's in that one. This one, I'm going to find my cheat sheet here. This one has, and we're continuing to look for ways to increase that, but we're currently at roughly 2.1 million. Some of the higher-paid positions that have been eliminated, we have a total of 22.5 positions that have been cut or not filled or unfilled that were open. And these would be, the higher-paid ones were the directors, behavior strategist, and assistant director, nurse. Elimination of a small department and a supervisor. You'll also see IT specialist, totem, and some admin employees that were totem, clerks, maintenance, and so on. And then a bunch of non-personnel reductions. Those you can see are just, we went through all 16 or 17 departments and asked them, "Can we cut this? Can we cut this travel? Can we reduce your equipment? Can we take out that software program?" So, there's been a systemic effort to do that, and that has garnered so far 2.1 million in cost reductions. The next one, yes, sir?
We'll need to use the mic because they can't hear us online. You can't hear the voice.
Is there a list of the positions that encompass, that are incorporated into the 2.1 million? And are any of those positions currently occupied?
Oh, yes, we'll have to get those. Andy and Jim would have all that information, and we can get that for you. It's not in the exercise, but the question is, that's what these sticky notes were for because then we can have people looking things up for you. So, Kathy will help out. She's back there helping over there now. Kathy was going to help capture these on the notes and stick them over here so we can look them up for you. Yes, Dora has a question.
So, I just wanted to clarify this. Moving sixth grade to middle school, also, does the sixth grade band and orchestra, do these two go hand-in-hand? So, if we move sixth grade to middle school, then we can, then we can assume that the sixth grade to orchestra or sixth grade band and orchestra would also be decreased? That amount would be decreased as well?
Uh, no. So, what, this one's actually easier than it looks. So, the sixth grade to middle school, 3.8 million. This one would, it wouldn't save all 3.8 in the first year, but it's close enough to go ahead and call it that. But what this one does is, sixth graders would still get band and orchestra if they're moving to the sixth grade to middle school. The next one that you had that says, "Cut sixth grade band and orchestra," that would only be a card to play if we are not moving sixth grade up. But we already kind of made that kind of decision. The only reason I left the sixth grade band and orchestra cut in here is in case there's a backstepping of the board that says, "We're not going to move sixth grade to middle school." Then you could cut sixth grade band and orchestra out of the elementary. Okay? So, it's a little confusing, but the moving sixth grade to middle school still allows them to have band and orchestra at the middle school. And there's still savings in there because you wouldn't need quite as many because they wouldn't be traveling so much. Those positions would be stationed in the school and not have to run around as many times.
So, it's really going to depend on whether we're looking for a short-term fix or a long-term?
Yes, so where, yes. So, the easiest way for all of you is to sort of think through, am I leaning towards solving this just for one year and not worrying about the rest? Or am I trying to help solve this going forward? That's really your path, short-term or long-term? I think I'm our out-of-order. So, what's the next one? Operations reductions, is that what's next? This one is just, there's a little list there. This is a group of things we've cut out of operations that we can save a million for. And so, admin has gone through and looked at those and made some cuts there. The next one, this one I need to explain because it's, this one says immersion PTR match. Now, you may remember that administration kind of made a comment at a public board meeting that we were no longer considering cutting the immersion programs. But what we decided to do is, we've met with the directors of immersion, and we've determined that if the immersion PTR levels are similar to or as close to the neighborhood sides as we can get, immersion programs across all seven can reduce six FTE and try to get their class sizes to be matching the neighborhood side. Because what you see is happening, they can do that in a couple of ways. One, recruit more students, right? The other ways they can do it is to change some of their entrance requirements on letting kids in. The other way they can do it is running combo classrooms. They have not been running combination classrooms. So, what was happening is on the neighborhood side, we call it, the gen ed, public side of the business, there's, might be 32 kids in a class. On the other side of the hall, immersion's running, and there's 19. And the sort of the feelings that that generates over time is that we're treating that program very differently. So, we've met with Brandon. We found a way that we'll be working with them. So, when it says immersion PTR match, it means we can save 700,000 dollars per year and require them to have the same class sizes roughly that everyone else has to have. And that would save 700. The next one, dome rental. That was a pretty easy one. We rent a dome. No one else in the state has a dome. You know, it's a good thing, but it's also something we can do without. What does it mean? It means tracking soccer kids and those who have, need to be on the fields early in the spring. It means they lose some time because there's not an indoor practice facility for them. But we can clear the fields, save 200,000 if we back out of that contract at the end of the year. Yes. The only one you can't do is, can't do the sixth grade band and orchestra and play the middle school card at the same time. That's the only one. So, that's the folder on that one. Then the next one, you're probably really interested in. There's the last folder, says wild cards. We've been hearing all these town halls. People, you've been getting emails from the public. People are offering up ideas that have never been put on the table. If you've heard of one that you want us to explore, you're going to fill this out, come over and talk to Kathy. We'll get it up on the chart. If the admin can do some homework for you to look into that. I mean, if there's something that is not out here that you are serious about us pursuing, fill that out. Come over here, talk to Kathy. We'll get it on the parking lot, and we'll see if we can find some info for you. So, back to the agenda. The staff is available over here for questions. We can dialogue and so on, just to help you. During this period, the public also has the same material set up so they can go back and decide if any of them have a particular philosophy. Are they thinking short-term, long-term, some kind of hybrid in between? The good news is, is there is a path to a balanced budget. I think that's pretty clear now. Question is, you know, what do you think's going to happen next year or the year after? Are we trying to solve some of these problems this year? Or you want to wait and see? The board, we kind of want to know your thinking because we have to put a 600-page budget book in front of you in February, and we would like it to incorporate a general direction or strategy that we think most of the board is leaning towards so that when we put that in front of you, it represents some of your, at least a majority of your values. You can work together or alone. You can all cluster up and work at it together. Or you can, you can do something totally unusual and not even do your own thinking. You can pretend to be someone in the community who's proposing. I've been reading some of the stuff coming into the board about, you know, their strategies, and maybe you want to, so, okay, if I was that person, this is how that would look. So, it doesn't have to be your thinking right now, but the goal is to show you how there's an opportunity cost. Everything you do has an opportunity cost somewhere else. So, what's the board's basic values on this? And that's it. We won't have any more activity or discussion until about 10:30 or later, which time we'll try to bring some closure. And Margot, you have a question over here?
Hello? What's not missing, what's missing to me here? I see the 48 million to balance the budget. But the issue is opportunity. And opportunity to increase academic outcomes and increase improvement are the things that the 48 million doesn't address that we should put on it? Maybe it needs to be 55 million. Maybe it needs to be 60. But whatever it is that's going to help the kids is what I don't see on here that I would like to see. What can we do? I had a meeting with someone the other day, and they made the comment that the legislature knows the base student allocation is all. But they said, "What can they do to help fix education?" But they said, what can they do to help fix education? And that, that goes beyond just balancing the budget and looking at dollars and cents. So I don't see anything here, which I'd like to see, is the opportunity to be able to say, if we could raise it some, what would we be doing to improve outcomes for kids and giving them a better education, rather than just continuing the status quo with less money?
So there are two things that come to mind. And I'm just going to put this one out there. You're aware that the, under the REEDS Act, that the state has put out some, and they're narrowing their choices down, but they're offering fairly significant financial incentives for state districts in this state to adopt a particular reading program that is aligned to the science of reading and asking us as a state, if we take that money, that we would implement it with fidelity. There will be some financial costs. We don't know what that is. When you say, are there any things that we can do that affect budget that are about student outcomes? Yes, that is one of them. What, the reason it isn't a card or anything is, it isn't, we have no idea what the expense levels are because we don't yet know how much money the state will provide for that incentive. So we're investigating that and we'll have some information for the board before the budget is developed. But that is one. The other one, we have no financial incentives for you on here, but will be something in the next three to five years that will have to be addressed around student outcomes. You have a very ambitious set of goals that are around college, career, and life. How those career academies and things evolve over time is yet to be fully known. But that is one thing, but that's not going to be found in this exercise right now. So that's, that's my response to that.
And if I could just add, you know, as far as activity, we'll be looking at a number of options. And some of the questions that we'll welcome today are around what are the academic trade-offs? For example, let's say that we decide to reimagine ASDV. I think the questions we can start asking today are, what are the academic outcomes in ASDV for elementary school students now? And we can start answering those questions. For example, if we make a move from sixth grade to middle school, what are the potential academic benefits of such moves or academic disadvantages? We want to make sure that we're informed as to what the pros and cons are, particularly in academics, before we just make any final decisions.
So with that, then it's basically time for individuals and/or board members to work, either work together, work alone, and just, you can spread out, whatever you want. And basically, that's it. And just, you know, I don't know what your personal path forward is you're leaning towards. And it would be nice if during this time of dialogue, you can talk to your colleagues and see. Our goal is to have some sort of direction from, we think, the majority of the board so we can build out a budget book that represents some of those values. Because that's our goal between now and February. So with that, we'll stop. And if you have any questions, all the staffs over here, they've got computers. They can look up numbers. They can, by the way, you'll need your cell phone to total these up. And, and if you don't have a phone to do that, these guys will total it up for you and see how close you are to 48. So thank you.
I'm open to working with somebody if anybody is interested. And, and please, if you have ideas, give it to Kathy so she can put it up here. I know Andy had, had one that came up at the last meeting, which I'm interested in learning more about. So put them up as soon as you can. All right. Dora, you want me to come over there or you come over? Well, you don't have no room over there. Oh, wait, yeah, you do.
Test, we're going to come back together at 10:45. So if you need a break, please take it now. All right, who are we missing? Oh, everybody's in the room. I'd like to do a kind of a check-in to see where people are. How were you leaning, long-term or short-term? Long-term? Anybody else? How were you leaving, leaning? Just in terms of your planning, in terms of how you laid out your budget.
President, I think we've, I think we have a couple data points that I guess might change our outlook in terms of a strategic planning process. You've got the budget, the governor's budget next week that may give us an indicator as to where the conversation might start from at least the executive branch in terms of education funding. The governor's mentioned that education is one of his priorities in the second term, and so that's a good indicator. But the rubber will meet the road when we see the budget proposal. I think once we, you know, see prefiled bills at some point, you know, that'll be, provide further clarification on what starts in each house. But I think the, I think there's optimism where the board can plan on seeing a, you know, a BSA increase. But there also needs to be forward-thinking, as this time last year, we were optimistic as well. And we saw Rep. Story's prefiled bills indicating that there was going to be, you know, a sustainable path to BSA increases, and that didn't work out. So I think we need to, to match our optimism with kind of a look towards FY25 as well.
Okay, thank you. So on the the activity that you just did, were there any, I guess, aha moments that anybody would like to share? Or want to share any of the work that, the things that you, you know, you're thinking, member lessons? Yeah, please use your mic.
Thank you. I think that the biggest, I mean, I came in with a spreadsheet of how to get to 48.2 million. And I think I found a pathway there. Or I thought I had one this morning before coming here. But Dr. Stock suggested that changing, that decreasing the fund balance to 7%, courtesy of a supermajority vote of the board, would save an additional $6 million and could be done safely and with confidence was something that changed how I approached this morning's activity to some degree. So that was a bigger aha moment for me. So I appreciate that additional input.
Okay, thank you. Yes, member, oh, did you have your?
Yeah, I'll jump in real quick. I think, and I just got this confirmed, I mean, since I was on the board originally, 2008, I knew they didn't do anything then. And now I found out they haven't done it since then. They've never gone out for bid on group health insurance, which is a major cost factor. It's our number one driver of inflation over 30 years has been group health insurance. Never go out for bid, never. And, and that is, and I, somebody who's administered HR and benefits and even have license in life and health and everything else, that is a huge savings area from an administration standpoint. And I saw the information come in, in negotiations that would have saved money with group health insurance, but we're doing nothing. And so that's the unknown out there. How much is that really worth? But I have no question that it's worth a lot, okay? It is worth millions to do that. And I have gone in with bids and saved 23% in one year. Our costs on group health insurance is so great that not going out for bid, maintaining status quo, doing the other is a serious concern. Now, I don't know how to factor that in for a dollar sense today. But I do know from a priority standpoint, to me, that is a huge issue. So I see that as a possibility. The other is, I'm just trying to understand some of the cost factors in here. Why do we save so much for middle, for sixth graders to junior high, middle school model? If we're not closing schools, how does the money come out? So I'm just kind of curious about some of the factors involved here.
Okay, thank you. Did you put, do you have your health insurance question on a, on a?
I will. I've just got verification of the never going out for bid.
Now, we, that would be for exempt? And?
Anyone covered under it, because you have some contracts that don't have their own insurance, tell them for one.
AEA has its own insurance, right?
But then we tie in our contribution rates based on our cost. And so that has a ripple effect. And we have the ability, as I understand it, to actually get the insurance from a different group that is really doing cheap compared to what we do. If that's valid, but it needs to be explored. That would be a rate equal to whatever Michigan's paying. And if that's really valid, and I don't know if it is, this is just suspect, then we're talking about making up a large, a significant part of the deficit. This is the, the management aspect of it. If I was putting the money in my pocket that I saved on group health insurance, that had been out for bid a long time ago.
Thank you. Member Holloman.
This is sort of an aha from, just from feedback from the community. I, I do think that, given the projections for population and whatnot, we need to have a plan to consolidate buildings. But I also feel like this year, we might have two years in a row where school is kind of normal if we don't close buildings. And that stability at this particular moment in time, I think, matters more than I had thought about in advance. So I, as I constructed mine, I did not have any savings from consolidating buildings. But I think we need to come up with a plan to do it, partly to be able to tell the legislature that, yeah, we, we do have procedure, or we're developing a procedure to deal with some of these very difficult issues to eventually make the district more efficient. But I would prefer that it not be driven so much by the immediate budget issues that, that we do look longer term. But I would prefer that it not be driven so much by the immediate budget issues, that, that we do look longer-term where we get the most savings and do the least damage, as well as have a little more time to plan and say out loud to the public what our support system will be for students who are being involuntarily relocated. So I, the building consolidations have been a huge part of what we've talked about. I, I don't want to, I'm not totally against that, but I also am looking at it as something, I'm not sure it's workable for the coming year.
Okay, thank you. Member Lessons.
Thanks. I wanted to speak maybe a little bit about the prospect of closing or consolidating any schools. The only one that I have on my chart here would be to close Abbott Loop. And I think there's an opportunity to both show that we are interested in consolidating the district, to utilize our buildings more efficiently and provide the supports that students need, and to pilot a really unique opportunity. So if we move 170 students from Abbott Loop to Cassune, what I would love to see is an additional investment in the evidence-based model at Cassune. We know that that will cost more. But if we can treat those students right and get those class sizes dialed in, we will mitigate some of the effects that disrupting their environment, their learning environment could be. So I would like to understand more for the move of students from Abbott Loop to Cassune, and maybe also to, from Abbott Loop to Trailside. But the scale of students going to Trailside is significantly less than going to Abbott Loop. And based on my own driving around observations, I'm guessing that students living south of 88th and versus students living north of 88th, I think that more economically disadvantaged students may end up at Cassune than at Trailside. So interested in what the investments would need to be to pilot test an evidence-based model at one or both of those schools next year. And then I guess the follow-up to that is I'm interested in using Abbott Loop to downsize part of the administration's building so that we can have long-term savings. I really like the Ed Center, it's highly used, it's very functional. But if we can use the year to do whatever needs to be done in Abbott Loop, to move part of the administration there, and we'll find another location for more administrative offices as well. Another location, location, I think that there's an opportunity. And Abbott Loop is, is not inaccessible. It's on Lake Otis, it's a highly-traffic corridor between, you know, Dowling, between Diamond Abbott. It's not here on sort of the northeast side of Ingraham, but it's fairly central. So it's, it's a creative solution.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? So how many people actually got to 48 mil? Okay, all right. Do we want to, how much of the fund balance did we use? I'm just curious. If you don't mind sharing. I know Kelly shared that she used seven, right? So that's 32? 34? You did 8%?
I did 8%.
Okay, so we, we're at least in, in general sync. So the 34 would be with the, going to seven, right? Okay. Yes. Yeah, can you use your mic? Can we, and I think-
Thank you, Madam President. I think Member Lessons made a, a very cogent argument that 7%, if we went to 7, that 1% might more than be made up by our inability to fill all our vacant, all our positions.
Okay, that's a good point. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm looking at it, I'm just, it, it, so many unknowns in regards to what funds we're going to get, that I'm trying to, I'm focused more upon selecting things that we can reverse without creating problems for kids. If I put more fund balance in here, there's something with, in view, it may save the money there and do the others. It adds up relatively quick in regards to this, and it gives us a lot of flexibility. And we can always decide if we don't get the money from the state to say, we need a couple more next year anyway. And we can add that before July 1. So that's really what I'm triggering in him right now, is saying, how do we limit the impact to kids? Make decisions we ought to make anyway, you know, because we can make savings, and do it in a way so that the kids are less impacted. And, and I don't want to make permanent changes when it's a temporary issue.
And I appreciate that, Member Higgins, I think that's our sentiment as well. I, I don't think anybody is, at least on my team, this team right here, we work, we chose to work together. It was, it was to minimize any impact to students. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just want to, I guess I'll circle back to the, maybe the proposed budget that's coming on the 15th. And thinking through, you know, we heard that the deficit from Mr. Anderson next year, FY25, it was going to be over 80 million. I think the, the statistic was we spent, before we even got to the original, 67 or 68 million, we incorporated 16 million of one-time funds from the state, and then roughly 10 million from one-time federal funds. And so we're, if we bring our, the further we bring our fund balance down, I hope we're keeping in mind that we're, in essence, placing more and increasing level of trust in Juno for the more we bring that fund balance down. And while I'm optimistic that we'll see a BSA increase, in the same way that many of us were optimistic we'd see a BSA increase last session. If, if there's a reality where we see a BSA increase of maybe half of what we're asking for, which is 860 based on inflation adjustments, we're still going to have to make significant cuts in FY25, and potentially even in FY24. And, and if the BSA increase doesn't come with an automatic inflation adjustment, we'll be back to relying on one-time funds or efficiencies over time, should always be the case. But leaning on efficiencies to balance a budget, and that added pressure might not be a best practice. And, and so I'm hoping we consider trying to break the mold a little bit too, as to how the district's been operating since at least prior to this board coming on. So I think we'll know more data soon. But I am concerned about lowering fund balance at a level that's lower than what's in our board policy. I think that's there for a reason, and we also don't know what Juno will do to Member Higgins' point, there's a lot of uncertainty right now.
So it seems like the, everybody was at 28, or 8% or 7 or 8% on the fund balance. And so, and I think our policy says eight? All right, thank you. Member Wilson?
I, I do want to say thank you to the staff, because I really appreciated this exercise. I'm, I'm very visual, it was very helpful to me, the conversations, I appreciate the conversations with the board members. So thank you for, for you guys all being willing to, being willing to work together and share. There, there was a couple things I just wanted to point out. That I, I still support moving our sixth graders to middle school, in part because the district's partway there. So that there's the consistency of it. In my mind, consistency typically leads to efficiency. So I, I just wanted to put that out there. The immersion programs, that was a little bit of an aha moment to me, because I didn't realize that some of the classrooms weren't splitting as the, they do on the traditional side. And I, I am a huge advocate for immersion programs, so to find ways to build that efficiency so that those programs are sustainable and equitable in many other ways is, is really important. So I appreciate that being addressed and that being added to the list. I, I did also want to address the dome rental, that I'm not in support of, of removing the dome rental off of our, out of our budget, because I don't feel like it's transparent. There are many families that are, would be affected by that. And the, 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 I guess not giving those families enough notice, enough opportunity to advocate, enough research for time for me, puts me in a position where, where I would not advocate for that to be used as, as an opportunity to reduce our expenditures. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I don't know what kind of information would be, I mean, you're having a general discussion, but and we did leave some room on our last, on the agenda for the 19th, to put, for the board to start having more discussions. It's, it appears to me that there's consensus around the, at least at this point in this discussion, there's consensus around the fund balance at 28 million. And then we can, in a, I mean, so we can begin talking about that, and not, I mean, at our next meeting, and accept whatever amendments there might be. I know we can't, we can't vote here, but I, there is consensus around the 28 million of fund balance. Middle school, we have come to consensus, we did at one point. And I don't know if that consensus still, do we want to talk a little bit about middle school?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, if I might. So I asked for a data point, actually, a few meetings ago, and I did thank you to staff, I did get that today. I think the, the starting point for the number of schools we have at 65% utilization is maybe somewhere between 8 and 12, and staff can clarify. I forget what the actual number we came up with, but I think the projection from staff and Mr. Biggum is that if we move six to middle school, that would increase that number of elementary schools at 65% utilization or so, or less, to roughly 19. And so that does have, I'm not, I think that there are academic benefits to moving six to middle school. We've already done so in part of our district. But I think that as part of a strategic plan, I, I don't think that, I mean, that data point was just given to us today. And so we, I don't think the board has fully fleshed out a forward-thinking process of what happens two, three, four years down the line, and what that means for closures, or potentially, you know, we have this additional half BSA funding that we know is already insufficient, based on inflation, for certain pre-K programs, based on the Alaska REIT Act. Is there opportunities to, to use that to mitigate some of that empty building space? I know it's been discussed. I don't know that we've gone down that road as a board quite yet, and kind of shown the light down that hallway. And so I personally would prefer more conversation, but that's, that's my perspective.
More conversation on the impact of the, now, it's my understanding that that would take, that would be phased in over time, correct?
Yes, it was, the proposal that had been discussed was a phase in over two years, although I believe the 3.8 million is spread over, it would be spread over that time.
Over two years. Okay, member Higgins, and then member Less-
Yeah, I have a number of reservations about the middle school and the sixth graders, and it's kind of like this. I mean, sixth graders are younger kids, they go into a school that's not really a true middle school model, where they've got the support in there with the extra class, extra hour, and they've got the parents, I mean, they've got the teachers focused on the kids and their issues and things of that nature, how that, from a year-younger kind of standpoint, really impacts them. If they go into sixth grade, it's going to be going from class to class to class, it's not going to be one teacher there, I assume. It's going to be truly the, the middle school model, and I don't think it's middle school, I'm sorry. I know we keep talking about that. But the whole idea of the middle school model is provide times for, for the teachers in a group to be able to focus on the kids for an hour, and we're going to take that away, and somehow we're going to say, well, the kids, the teachers are still going to care about the, the kids. Well, of course they should. But the middle school model, to me, has always been having that extra time and focus and having that cluster so that they can intervene and help the kids do that, and that was part of the sales of it, of it. So I have some, I have real concerns about trying to say that, one, it's middle school, but it's, to me, it's a junior high model, okay? Two, the sixth grade moving forward, the age issue of moving them out of elementary if it's not going into a middle school model. Going in a middle school model is one thing, but going into a junior high in sixth grade is a little different ballgame. I was in sixth grade in middle school, in junior high, but I've had a, but it was like an elementary classroom, we had the same teacher. So it really wasn't that disruptive. But it can be very disruptive, and it's an awful lot to throw in, and I'm just not convinced that that's best for the kids. And that's really what the question is, not the finances, it's how is it going to impact the academic outcomes? And I, I know when the middle school model came in, I know what the sales was in the 90s, I understand why it was adopted. I saw the figures in retention of kids, less dropouts, things of that nature. But we move away from what the middle school model was, that it was sold when it was come in, and you put sixth graders into what I consider to be a junior high model. I, I'm just very concerned for the kids and not supportive of it, without more information.
So thank you, Member Higgins. We currently have sixth graders in middle school, and we, we do have sixth graders in middle school. We have them at Begich, we have them at Clark. Where else? Near Lake. It's not me?
I'm looking at you.
I think, no!
Again, Markham, they've got a schedule that's different, they've got more time with the teachers, to be engaged more with the kids, and to do that as a group. We're going to be moving the ways proposed into a junior high model, which is without that extra time to be able to devote to it. And I think that is not the same as saying, because we moved them into the middle school, it's the same as moving into what I consider to be a junior high model.
And I'm not, what I'm saying is, we already have the, the, we, we're doing it, and kids are being successful in three of our eight, or seven or eight, middle schools. Yes, so, and as an advocate for middle school, when there really was no, I mean, it was a new concept. I have evolved to where I could see sixth graders into middle school better than sixth graders in elementary. They get more opportunities. I think the, how, the master scheduling in middle school can be creative and flexible. But yeah, so, and I, and I guess my concern would be that this board would, would want to trust that the administration would carry out what, while that may, it may change, I, I don't think it's going to be a significant change, where we, and I don't think it would be, we would be creating, creating traditional middle schools. Member Holloman?
I know that at least for some of our sixth graders, it's been an option up to parents, as to whether they stayed in an elementary or went to a middle school, and, but I don't know if that's the case for all of them. Do we, do we have students that don't have the option of remaining in an elementary? And that might be a question to get back to.
I think the only, I mean, if it's a, like,
I know when we first started moving some kids to sixth graders to middle school, parents had the option. Then they have changed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that. Does six, does parents have an option to take their kids to, other than getting into an optional or alternative program?
I'm looking over spin, we've not offered that as a standard option across the district.
I mean, we have accepted-
We've looked at it in the past, when we first started looking at offering these as options. One of the challenges is staffing gets really wonky when you don't know, I mean, you might have everyone but 12 kids go, and now you, you see what I'm saying? You can't have 10 kids left in the sixth grade at a school. So we haven't offered that as a universal option. It doesn't mean there aren't schools, parents doing zone exemptions to go to a place where they would get that, and we offer it that way, yes. So if I couldn't, Madam President?
Yeah.
I just wanted to touch base on Member Higgins' comment, because it might tie to Member Lessons' questions that's up on the board here. So right now, the way your cards were laid out, when it says move sixth grade to the middle school, and it says, what was it, 3.8 million in savings? That savings was contingent upon not running the five-of-seven period. That's where Pat is headed with the comment about it would be a different schedule. I'm not going to call it a junior high, but they would have to revise the schedule. The savings of putting sixth grade in the middle school partially comes from the 27, you're using 27-to-1 ratio at sixth grade in the elementary, and 30.25 for sixth grade in the middle school. So there's that difference. But, you know, it wouldn't be cheaper, if you will, to move all the sixth graders into the middle school and keep the same schedule that you have at the middle school. It would cost more than sixth grade in the elementary right now. It would cost more than sixth grade in the elementary right now.
Then, then if I, for follow-up, it, then, then essentially, part of the savings would occur just by changing the middle school model. Part of it would be the sixth graders going in, so the sixth grader's going in is only a fraction of that saving. So if we had a more accurate picture, it would say, this is how much we save for eliminating the middle school, and then, then this is how much we save for moving sixth graders in there if we do, if we make the changes to the middle school model.
We could put some pencils to that.
Yeah, separate those two out.
Separating that out, so you can take a look at it.
That's overselling the sixth graders moving into the, into the junior high and middle school, where we want, we'll argue about that, but, uh, model, thinking.
Right. So that was two questions, right?
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, a breakout in regards to it, and then, just, uh, uh, if we went back, and this is something, but I just like information on. If we went back to the situation, let's say it's the early nineties, where we were going to move sixth graders into junior high, people didn't do it back then for a reason, because they, for growth with the kids. If they're not going to get the same level of support, and let's say it is a junior high model, if, if, if we call it junior high, um, would we not, would we oppose that or support that, or what would the studies show? The studies show moving to middle school helped, but for the sixth graders, if they tried to move them into a junior high in sixth grade to actually go around and go to all different classes, it, it just seems like that would be, just from an academic standpoint, was that something not advised because of social, emotional learning and growth and all that, that we're putting the kids on? That they don't have that individual teacher contact with the same kid is only issue, how would that impact things?
Okay.
That makes sense?
Right.
It does. Okay. So, any other comments on six, uh, sixth grade to middle school, Member Less?
Um, I guess I wanted to go on the record that I will support moving sixth graders to middle school. However, I'm interested in retaining the middle school model, and in part, I'm thinking about the length of time that students would have in any given classroom with the middle school model versus the non-middle school model, and correct me if I'm wrong, but under the middle school model, the, the length of a math class, for example, would be longer with fewer periods in the day than the length of a math class with an additional period for students in the day. I mean, as part of the middle school model, we lose that teacher prep period, so students would have an additional class in their.
I don't know that you lose it, but you, the scheduling is different in middle school. So you would, uh, uh, now, some people, some schools have a flexible schedule, so you would have Tuesdays, Thursdays, you might have longer class periods, uh, or rotating classes, so, uh, there is no one way.
Okay, well, I guess I'm, I'm worried that if we lose the middle school model, students will have less total contact minutes in any given science or math, or social studies, um, you know, over the course of the week or over the course of the year than they will in the middle school model. And I think that that would be a loss, and then again, from a grading perspective, you know, then if you have a whole nother class of papers to grade and, and tests to grade, um, that's an additional burden. So I think that there is a lot of value to the middle school model, um, to, to kind of lengthen the length of time that any given class has with their teacher. Um, so I want to be clear that I'm supportive of the pivot to middle school, but I want to retain the middle school model.
Did you build in some money in that?
I did.
Okay.
I got lots of money.
I can tell you built in the money.
But I also, and then, um, I just wanted to clarify, we received an email recently about the Rogers. I guess I wanted to, to outline somewhere the schools that would be exempt from
From the.
The pivot to middle school, uh, for sixth graders, and I understand that those would be like the optional programs, charter schools. Um, I don't know where the language immersion programs stand, and I don't know where, uh, the highly gifted program stands. So maybe if the administration could speak to which schools would be included in this phased rollout.
For the sixth grade to middle.
And, and which schools would be excluded from it entirely.
Yeah, you just outlined the ones that are, but we could come up with the actual list by names. Uh, but yes, you just outlined the schools that would be exempt from that.
Great.
Um, I, I want to touch base, if I could, on this concept of, um, scheduling, okay? Because the reason it's really hard, and we're stumbling to answer your questions, because so much of it depends on the types of scheduling. In, in, in ASD, we're pretty much historically built around two things, a five-of-six period day in the high school and a five-of-seven in the middle school, and that's pretty much what we know. But across the country, there are, and even here, we're already experimenting with, schools are using various forms of block scheduling. There's trimesters, there's all different methods of scheduling. What, what really happens at our level is when we do a PTR adjustment, the principal looks at how much staff they have, how many students they have, what people signed up for, and then they build schedules around it. But a lot of the questions you're asking really depend on the types of schedules that people are actually running. And until you actually run the PTR models through there of different principals, like, for example, when we raised PTR at the middle school, everyone was worried, oh, we're no longer going to be able to run five-of-seven period days. Well, they still found a way, but what Pat is referring to did happen. The traditional model of the four subjects who are teaming together, the types of teams they had to create had to get more creative and flexible to make it work, so there are a lot of scheduling implications. Uh, Mr. Swadney's been working, has built a spreadsheet, uh, we were looking at it this week in part. Uh, I don't have it right here in front of me, but we looked at various PTR levels of, of increase to see how many FTE would that drop per grade in the different schools, and so we have that. That's still not the same as, are you still running a five-of-seven period day then? And that, those numbers would have to be run, uh, through scheduling, so.
Thank you. Okay, so, what else would help the administration? Any, we're not, um, I, I, I actually want to kind of know what's on your sheets, if you want, don't mind, we've heard from some of you. Are there any questions up there, Dr. Stock, that might need to, that, can you just read the questions that are up there?
Sure.
So the questions that, uh, some of the folks put up here, one says, if we kept Nuneck and Northwood open as neighborhood schools, but expanded early education to fill the buildings, what would be the savings or expenses and/or operational problems with, with doing that? Another one is, can we move sixth grade to the middle school before we do all of the closures? Uh, some of you are noticing that, that those two are, uh, interrelated. Based on grades seven through twelve, I'm inclined to cut ASDV completely. Uh, one of the questions, one of the things that I would say to that is we have a significant number of high school fam, students, the bulk of all of our ASDV students are taking singleton classes to get ahead of college or to do credit recovery and re, get back on track. And, and out of two thousand plus students in the program, at least fifteen-hundred of them are there, and the bulk of those are juniors and seniors trying to get, get graduated or get onto college. So it would be hard for us, we, we could not do that, to, to be blunt about it. Uh, but at the elementary level, there's probably more options, because the class sizes at the elementary for ASDV is very small right now. Doesn't mean it won't grow, but it, right now, it's not. I wrote down Pat's question about group health insurance bids. The other question up here was from Member Less about the evidence-based model at Kassoon and Trailside. If, i- i- would that be a thing we could apply those staffing models from that model to, and then study it as a case study to see how well that works for student outcomes? I wrote that down as a very interesting, as a researcher guy, that kind of made me pick my interest. How much does it cost to retain the middle school model for six to eight? And so that's the big question right here, is if we kept, if we moved sixth grade to middle school and kept the model, what's the, what's that cost? That's something we'll have to study. Those were the questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, anybody want to share what's on, anything else that's on your hearts and minds? Member Less?
Thank you, this is a really helpful process, so, so thank you for setting this up. Um, I wanted to share that I increased PTR by one across the K-12 system on my chart. The wild, my wildcard of increasing the fund balance by an additional percent prevented additional layering, uh, quite frankly. Um, and I wanted to speak to why I'm comfortable with that PTR increase, and that is a, a direct reflection of the pro forma that we just received. And I, I didn't, I wasn't able to ask this question in the finance meeting the other day. Um, but if you look at, I'm looking at my papers now, um, if you look at the very last chart on the pro forma, there's data going back to twenty-nineteen, and it's my understanding that the board has not changed its funding allocation for PTR significantly, if at all, over the past three or four years. However, the actual PTRs are detailed in line four of that last chart, and it shows that this year, for example, our average PTR is at thirty-two-point-two. And I know that that's not what our FY twenty-three budget reflects, it's a reflection of, I think, probably our staffing. Um, so what I'm suggesting here by increasing PTR by one is not, in effect, increasing PTR on the average of thirty-two-point-two this year, it's, it's actually increasing sort of the parameters, and whether or not there's staffing is another question entirely. And, sorry, Jim, I see your hand up, yeah, maybe you can clarify my reading of that, that table.
So when you look at the pro forma and you looked at that table, remember that, that the number you're looking, you're, you're quoting does not include the five-hundred-nine FTE that we used in ARP.
Okay.
So, it's about ten PTR equivalent.
Okay, can you then explain the variance in the PTR, uh, from the FY nineteen forward on that chart? Because it's not a level number, it sort of toggles up and down a little bit, even though I think that the board and previous boards have allocated pretty steady amounts of funding towards PTR.
Uh, yeah, so that chart reflects the years two thousand twenty-two and prior are actually based on actual numbers, so the actual number of kids that showed up versus the staffing that we budgeted. So it changes a little bit based on our metric on that. Uh, the FY twenty-three number will show just the general fund budget. So as you see, it go from twenty-three to twenty, or twenty-two to twenty-three, there's like a five PTR increase. Uh, and that was moving, the SIRS Act provided for about a five PTR, the ARP Act for this year was about ten PTR. So you'd see that change in the budget-to-budget numbers of five, of exactly five, and then the years prior were actually true, uh, based on actual enrollment. So like in FY, uh, twenty, twenty-one, those, when the students didn't come back, we still had those teachers on staff, so you saw a drop in the act, the general fund PTR.
So just to clarify, for the people who might not be tracking, state statute gives us, um, specific dates for teachers on when you could do RIF notices. During the pandemic, we didn't know how many kids were coming back. You had, if you, if you knew who was going to come back in August, I mean, if you remember the first year, we were forty-five-hundred kids short. Um, and we, we didn't know what that number would be, and it was a global pandemic, there is no historical data to be able to predict that. But all of those teachers still stayed on staff, even though we had forty-five-hundred less students. And then the next year, we projected that seventy-five percent of the students would come back, but only about half of them came back. So again, you were budgeting for more teachers than you had students. So anytime we look at those one-off numbers during the pandemic, they, they're not representative of a historical comparison, really.
Thank you for that. Um, I will say that the other reason that I feel reasonably comfortable, again, in these constrained circumstances, increase in the PTR, even though that's not what I want to do, is that I think it's highly elastic.
Right.
And we received a thirty-dollar BSA increase for FY twenty-four, which I think amounts to two-point-six or two-point-seven million dollars in increased revenue. I feel that it's a reasonably competent thing to do, to increase PTR by one for seven-point-one million dollars. And I don't think it's out of the realm of the possible that we might see an increase of the BSA that would allow us to retract that increase as a very easy thing to do, should action be taken in Juneau, you know, in March or April or even May. I think that's more easily retracted than, um, core programmatic cuts. That's my opinion, now.
You want to finish, what else is on your list, if you don't mind sharing?
Sure, you want the whole thing? All right.
And then, just quick, so we can.
I'll give you a brief overview, so I'm comfortable moving the fund balance down to seven percent, but that would mean, uh, we would need a board supermajority, uh, to increase the fund balance savings. Um, I'm using two million dollars from the school bond debt reimbursement funds, and specifically, that would be allocated to help retain some of the, some of the five quote schools that I'd like to keep, uh, functioning next year. Um, I'm comfortable with closing Abbott Loop, as I spoke, because I'd like to invest in an evidence-based approach to those students. I'm comfortable increasing PTR by one. I'm comfortable with the district administrated, uh, administration cuts by about two-point-one million dollars. I'm comfortable with the immersion PTR match of point-seven million. I'm comfortable with changing ASD Virtual by point-seven. I'd also propose a wildcard of another one-point-four million dollars in cuts to ASD Virtual. I'm really concerned that ASD Virtual is being used for credit recovery, I don't think it's working. And those are the, that's my path to saving forty-nine-point-three million dollars. Um, and I'll just say that it doesn't include reducing expenses at middle school, because I would like to retain the middle school model, but I'm interested in moving middle schoolers to middles, sixth graders to middle school.
Thank you. Member Jacobs? Can you review our sheet, please?
I'm sure, yeah, I guess just the, the high-level overview, I think we, um, yourself, Madam President, Member Wilson, I've worked together, and we looked at maintaining fund balance at, um, eight percent. We, um, looked at, um, Abbott Loop, um, as a, um, expenditure reduction, uh, and, uh, working with the municipality, um, on the future of that building. Um, we worked with, um, Mr. Ratliff on what it would look like to, um, bring ASD Virtual students back to neighborhood and other, other ASD campuses, and, uh, the figure we got was north of five million, um, potential and expenditures, but there was a caution that some of that might need to, um, be utilized for, um, other opportunities like credit recovery potentially.
And that was, that was for the case, that was in U-12?
Correct, yep. Uh, we had a variety of, um, administration cuts, the two options on the table, uh, which were two-point-four, uh, million, um, operational reductions at a million, um, the immersion PTR match at point-seven million. And then, um, what I appreciated about our plan, I think, was that we kept, um, PTR for K-12, um, at the lowest we could, I think, which is a, a one, uh, reduction right now. Um, I guess I'll interject my, my thoughts on the PTR if we can, I think that, and I, I, I guess what I would not take issue with, I guess I want us to remember is that, um, it, it was even on our kind of cheat sheet, is that that's an option that's easily, um, something that can be dialed back, but there's, 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 there are staff on the other end of that line. Um, we're assuming that those folks won't find other opportunities, and there are hiring bonuses nationally, and so, um, you know, do we want to bank on the fact that the, the positions and the, the, the staff that are, um, that do lose their jobs and, you know, be increased PR, PTR to a high enough level, there will be people in those positions. Um, do we want to assume that they're going to sit around and wait for, um, the legislature and the district to figure out, um, how many of them get to return? And then, based on, you know, the contracts, those may be some of the newest teachers, the newest educators in our system, and so just urge caution there, um, just in general. Uh, with that said, we, um, those were kind of the high-level overviews. I think our total, Member Wilson calculated, was, um, just north of fifty or fifty-point-four million in savings. Um, I think the two off-the-table items that this, this group had was, um, state bond reimburse, debt reimbursement, um, and the dome rental.
So, uh, what, we had, where do we put sixth grade? Sixth to middle? Okay, is it on the?
It's, it's currently in a, on a, um, expenditure reduction. Um, I was a dissenting opinion there, uh, but I did get, had to get overruled within our group. Um, again, I, I understand that there's, there's two sides of it, but I, I feel like I haven't heard an answer, I guess, from the board um, as to how they feel about potentially looking at, when we're talking about nineteenth. nineteenth elementary schools that are under sixty-five percent capacity and the, the, um, what the path forward looks like for either filling those campuses or potentially how we feel about a significant number of closures. Thus far, there's really only been a proposal for one. And so I think we need to do more strategic planning around that. And I think some of that hopefully involves pre-K, but we haven't really fleshed that out. And so we, I think that, that's a, a big gap, I think, that we have to fill as a group.
Okay. And, uh, and what was in the parking lot besides bond debt?
Uh, so there was, uh, ideas around reducing the board line item, um, increased, so, so Member Wilson and I came up with, uh, and have been discussing with staff as well, the idea of increased, uh, Medicaid billing. Currently, the district has the availability to bill for, um, services related to special education for students with IEPs. My understanding is that years ago, as part of an administrative reduction, um, some of those staff that were responsible for billing were let go in kind of a, what I think now we could probably call an ill-conceived across-the-board administrative cut that, you know, we reduce salaries, but those folks brought in revenue. That actually was a, a net loss for us. And so, um, there is a path forward to, to, for us to increase our Medicaid billing, uh, for the services we provide to our districts and other states that are doing that to great effect. There's potential for more if, um, our state Medicaid plan was modified to increase some of the mental health services in our states that do that as well. But that would require an action by at least the governor. And so, uh, that might be part of our future legislative efforts. And the other two items were, um, a salary freeze for some of the, um, exempt administrative staff. Those typically, um, the staff that don't have, aren't related to classroom, um, work and typically are higher paid. Um, and then, um, they were, ignite reduction was in the parking lot as well.
Thank you. Dr. Stock?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just gonna, uh, make a comment to Mr. Jacobs', uh, comment about the PTR increase of one. Just to put in perspective, so if there was a increase to the PTR of one, it would, it would result in sixty less teachers over the course of the district and the concern over staff as far as this. Unlikely that that would result in any kind of pink slips. There could be some rare exceptions. We have two hundred fifty, three hundred teachers a year openings from attrition and people leaving and moving on. So it's not likely that that would be a hardship for that individual. The hardship, of course, would be a slight increase in class sizes in different places, depending on what school you worked in. The other thing it could be as, as far as staffing is if there was a specific, unique elective course in a high school that didn't have high student signups, there could be a selective pink slip based on the fact that that might be a teacher they might select to not work. But as far as attrition, truthfully, there probably wouldn't be any pink slips on a PTR increase of one, because we have almost three hundred openings a year, plus ones we can't fill now. So probably would result in the staff, uh, HR issue.
Right, I did just want to clarify. We do have quite a few current teacher vacancies. And as Dr. Stock alluded to, the turnover rate is hundreds of teachers a year. And then going into January, we'll be launching an early, uh, retirement notification incentive to staff. So we will be able to create forecast for staffing, um, early next semester.
Okay. So what were your off, off the table for you for our, us of the dome and of bond reimbursement? Kelly, what were your off-the-tables? Did you have some?
Yeah, I just piled everything else off the table. I don't want to reduce ignite. I don't want to, I didn't, I guess, a good question. I didn't propose cutting sixth grade band and orchestra. So if we move our students to middle school.
You only got to use one of those. Had to move them to middle school or?
Right, so I, okay. Okay, well, I have my sixth grade band orchestra thing over here. But, um, off the table is reducing ignite. I am off the table for me are doing any, moving forward with any of the school closures or consolidations at the five schools? Because I'd like us to have a school community utilization task force, whatever we call that. I think that we can buy time over the next year to really thoughtfully consider this, this, the path forward and create a vision. And even, and I think it's actually really important. If we move all of our sixth graders to middle school, that's going to even the playing field when it comes to utilization rates, I think. Because I'm, I'm kind of concerned that areas of town that have sixth graders in their elementary schools right now, you're kind of comparing apples and oranges. Um, and a school without sixth graders right now, you're, you're going to have different utilization rates because of those discrepancies. So, um, I almost think we shouldn't even look at that utilization data until we have like a level, a level thing. Like, let's just look at K through five enrollment, and then we can kind of plug in the preschool, you know, as an add-on. Um, anyway, so off the table is ignite. If we move to the fund balance utilization, I think that that prevents me from increasing other PTR layerings. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Member Donovan, you ready to share?
That's okay, thanks. Well, I'm supporting the district-proposed administrative cuts, including, you know, additionally, the operational reductions. Also, the second level of, uh, school administrative and operations reductions, the sixth grade to middle school per foot proposal. The reductions or change in the ASDV program and, uh, supporting, uh, member lessons enhanced dollar amount there, looking for, uh, less expensive alternatives to the essential elements of it. Elimination of the Office of Equity and Compliance.
Is that a wild card?
Yeah, it is. I have a few more wild cards. Yeah, I did. Eliminating the, uh, dues to the Equity Coalition, uh, the dues to the Council Grade City Schools, the dues to the Alaska Association of School Boards. Some of the things I had off the table was, uh, Birtwood repurposing, because I believe that ABC program there is just the future, one of our keys to our futures of success. And I would oppose losing any ABC programs, because I think we ought to be moving more in direction towards those. I also do not support the reduction in ignite. I do not support the reduction, the increase in class sizes. And I've also taken the dome rental off my list. I would like to see if there was available, to follow along with Member Higgins' thoughts, some additional reading, uh, investment with any additional funds that we might free up to address the current reading crisis we're facing, trying to get more and more of our third-grade students up to reading capability. So if there was any ability to enhance that with, uh, piloted Spalding Reading or other heavy-based phonics reading programs, I'd like to see us, uh, target individual schools for development of those. It would be a multi-year process. But we know that it works, because we have multiple schools right now that are excelling using that program. So those are some of my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. And so, and your, uh, fund balance, what, what was that, your one time? Did you have a?
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-eight? You were at the twenty-eight?
Going down to the?
Eight percent?
Yeah, the base eight percent.
Okay.
Yes.
And what about the bond re, anything for bond reimbursement?
I might, I would consider using some of the bond reimbursement to make up the, the difference to balance the budget. Which, in my overall calculation here, was about eight million dollars.
Thank you. Member Holloman? We haven't heard from you.
I'd use fund balance to the eight percent level, um, twenty million in bond debt reimbursement. Uh, I do see, um, moving virtual K five, discontinuing that. But for academic reasons and for budget reasons. And a plus one on PTR across, um, in, uh, grades four through twelve.
Oh, just four through twelve, not K twelve?
Not K twelve. And to, to some degree, this is classic kicking the can down the road. On one hand, there definitely is some energy about what might come out of the legislature. But everybody who's been doing this for a long time knows that it doesn't usually happen. It can happen, it occasionally happens. If you ever did those studies of psych experiments, you know that the most effective thing is you give the rabbit a little piece of kibble like every eight times, it does the right thing. That's more powerful than doing it every time. So I don't know for any eighth year of being denied. I guess we are, aren't we? So maybe, maybe there's some kibble there to be had. But I, I do think in that case, it gives us a year. I, I, I think math drives the idea that we need to consolidate elementary schools. I, I think it's a good idea. And I think the way it's been presented is, gives people lead time, although the public obviously still feels blindsided and rushed by it, whether they should or should not. But it would give us a year to say, this is something we have to do unless we see a reversal in student population and, and begin a process of how we do that, how we support those students. Because I, I, even if the legislature does come through, I don't think very many people in the public are, are going to say we will continue to support ninety-seven buildings, no matter how small the populations in those buildings get. I support the idea of maybe broadening the attendance boundaries for our early childhood education in Northwood and, uh, Nanaca as a way of fully utilizing those buildings. And I think there's, there's going to be some expansion of state funds for, for early education or pre-K. But that also means taking away from other buildings potentially. In which case their utilization goes downward. So it is a tough one. You know, I'm wondering if there's a way to engage leadership of those, uh, buildings that may be affected or possibly staff that may be affected. But that's all over the coming year. That's, that's not between now and when we do this budget. So, yeah, I'm, I'm doing a number of temporary things that don't really fix the problem. And, uh, saying the funding picture either does change significantly with, um, base student allocation. But we still need to make some cuts into the future as well. And if nothing changes on BSA, we need to make more severe cuts as well.
Okay, thank you. Member Higgins? I, I wish your mic.
Thank you. I'm gonna just one start, one comment, and that is when I asked the question about incorporating in here additional funds needed for academic. I think the response of the legislature is pike is old and in that we do have a comprehensive response. And this is similar to what the lower forty-eight is doing and has been doing in addressing it and getting results. So, um, there's a number of components to that that I think we will be able to address with the legislature. When I looked at the budget, I tried to add more things than what would add up to the forty-eight, and I decided to put everything in there, what I might consider. I'd be willing to go with the fund balance to twenty-eight, uh, tw- eight percent. That's a substantial amount of money. I do not want to see that happen, uh, because I think we need to be conservative on the reserves that we have for a lot of different reasons. But I'll be willing to go down to the, to the eight percent as needed. The state school bond debt reimbursement, I put seventeen million in there, because we're responding to the, to the public's comments and meetings about inlet view. We can put it in there as a remodel. We can put substantial funds and still have savings in, out of there. This funds will allow a lot of flexibility. I think we're showing ourselves responsible for the voice of the public when we do so. And if, that they would expect that to, to not have school closures, which is something I'm not proposing right now. I think later we may have to look at it, but I don't think right now that's the best source. District admin cuts, I'm never going to say no, what the heck, you know? That's just me. I'd be willing to look at how we can do ignite, that's okay. PTR, uh, plus one, four to twelve only. I do not want anything below that, but four to twelve, I would. My concern on that is when you cut a teacher, you cut what they teach. And that means you could impact your programs. I think that's, that's absolutely right. When you get somebody who leaves teaching a particular thing, then that what they teach, you're not going to have. So it's not just increasing classroom sizes, it's increasing option for kids. So let's look at the, the big impact, but I'm willing to be flexible on that. Operations reductions, I don't know what that would really constitute. I left it up there, a little bit nervous. Same thing with school admin operations, I'm not sure, three hundred thousand. I always feel like you could put, you know, a few percent in any budget and say, find a cut and they will find it. Okay, so I'm, I'm not too concerned about that aspect. I've got two wild cards. Uh, one is to outsource benefit administration. That was already proposed to the administration of half a million dollars. The administration instead chose to cancel that, go with a sole source and not take advantage of that with employee benefits, and that was a given. And they argued that it was sole source, because if they could do that, because it's a professional service. Well, it's a product, and I disagree strongly with it. But they gave up half a million dollars, as if half a million dollars doesn't matter. So that's a real big concern. And the second one is a wow, wild card, and that's health insurance. Whenever I've done health insurance going out for bids, when it hasn't gone out for bid for a long time, you save a lot of money. I've saved twenty to thirty percent sometimes going out for bids. And this one hasn't gone out for bid for a long time. Most of them will go on every three years. Uh, this one hasn't gone out for at least fifteen and maybe much more. And so if they never go out for bids, the amount of money that can be saved there is huge. That's a wild card for me. But I would, if we're paying thirty-five million right now, disregard the union, uh, bids, uh, that's out there. We also have, I know, proposals that was put out there that would allow us to be able to tie into a lower forty-eight rate with Michigan and do that. And that could be, um, um, that could be a ten million type, type savings. I don't know what it really represents, and I don't know if it's a good plan. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there that exploiting these and without saying no, um, to it, it was a mistake. We had savings opportunities in one contract. We didn't do it because they didn't want to change the way the status quo is. So that's a, that's my wow.
What was your first wild card? What was your first wild card?
First one is to outsource the benefit administration. That can be done without any cost, no cost.
Outsourcing what?
Benefit administration would be zero cost to the district.
Okay. And now, I don't know, are those things that you're looking for in the future, not between now and February?
It won't be done by February, but it can be done before July one.
Yeah. And I'm just saying, we gotta have a balance budget.
Yes.
Okay, just get in the timeline here.
That's absolutely right, because there are different groups that have offered to do that. Uh, off the budget, um, I'm not supporting right now school closures. I know the Abbott Loop, I can argue that point. I understand where you're coming from and other issues. But I, but I see this as an impact on, on parents' involvement, and that impacts for me academics. So I, I just want a balanced review of that a little bit more, not from the benefits of how easy it is to administer, or that if we combine first and second grade, what can we do to mitigate the impact that has for teachers? Because there are options out there, I believe. So I just feel like that needs to be further flushed out before I support it. I don't want to cut sixth grade band orchestra, um, or, or school closures. And, um, uh, and the other items, I just, I didn't put them in the hell no type category, excuse me.
That was not an option.
I slipped on that. But, uh, I, I, I'm not, I'm not looking at that as being included. And if I got sold on that, it'd be a different ballgame. So I left it kind of open in that. But it totals a lot more than what the, um, the requirements are to do this, and that gives us flexibility. Like I said, if I have to go back, keeping the fund balance at a higher level, to me, is a real, hate to use this word, conservative approach. But I do like the idea of having that fund carryover. It gives us for future years, it gives us in case we get the, the earthquake again or whatever else happens, it gives us more flexibility, and I think we need that flexibility.
Alrighty, thank you, guys. Questions? Other comments? Member Lesson?
Can I ask what the process is next? What, I mean, on the nineteenth, are we going to be giving, you know, voting on separate individual paths forward? Or will the administration present a package that we will then vote yes or down? Uh, I can, based on the input from today?
So I'm hoping that, and we're still trying to get a timeline in place, because it all depends on us. From today, it looks like, um, I mean, we're, we're kind of all over the place, except for. except for, uh, school closures, uh, looking at closing Abbott loop. At least three groups or board members looked at closing Abbott loop. We have the admin cuts. There's consensus around that pretty much. I mean, ironically, none of the athletic, other than the dome is off, the dome contract was talked about. And a couple of people had it off the table. So I, I think what we're going to have to do is take all these and try to figure out where the board is. I don't know, what is the next step? What do you think, Dr. Brian?
Well, I know that we had discussed that there is an urgent need to have some sort of direction when it comes particularly to school closures and the middle school conversation. I know we had expressed interest in exploring what that could look like. I know right now those two items are potentially non-action, but I know that there may be alternatives that we can explore between now and mid next week. So I'm open to that conversation. Those are the two that are the most time sensitive.
The most time sensitive. And so we could potentially have, we have them now on non-action for the nineteenth.
Right.
So sixth grade to middle school and the closure question.
So if there were a path to consider them for action, the administration is open to that because to build a budget book, we'll need to know which campuses are on the books.
Okay. So it seems to me that the, the consensus is to, is to at least close, either not close. So we're going to have to have a discussion. Because the only school, and, and for me, the Abbott loop closure is a tough one, except all of them are tough. But that school is in the greatest need of care in terms of its physical, um, the maintenance that's needed. I mean, the, the plan would be to tear it down if we did not consolidate. So I don't know that I agree with moving administration into that building. But that school, I mean, I, I can, I can live with not closing Abbott loop. And it seems like the rest of the board can too. And Burchwood, I think that you're, so we need to have that discussion. And I don't know how to, I mean, is everybody good with that discussion going forward to, to action at, on the November nineteenth meeting? Clarify. Just that we would have a school closure discussion on the nineteenth. And make them, you know, I, I mean, I, I'm trying to figure out the path forward with what you guys want to do. Remember lessons?
I would be supportive of move, of, of having an Abbott loop closure on the November, December nineteenth agenda. I have a question regarding the Abbott loop. There, as member Donley referenced, there is a small amount of outstanding bond funding available, like maybe four million dollars for Abbott loop that we were going to apply towards fire suppression. Could that be applied to any facility remedies towards making it some kind of an administrative site? And also, the district received about nine million dollars in major maintenance. And I'm wondering if any of that is, would be available towards necessary building remedies at Abbott loop again to make it a functional administrative space.
Is anyone else interested in Abbott loop or whatever? If, if the vote is to close Abbott loop, anybody else interested in it being an administration site?
Madam President? I'm, I'm open to the possibility. I'd like to know what our options are and costs relative to that.
Member Holloman?
I would be open, but it'd need to be part of a larger plan or, you know, just if we just moved part of this building there, that doesn't really get us anything.
That's how we got this building, because we were like in eight sites throughout the city.
Yeah, that, that was an interesting time. So it would, it would have to be hand in hand, I think, with, with abandoning this building. And obviously Abbott loop's not sufficient. So there are a lot of other factors in there as well. So I, I don't know that we can, that the board can have that discussion intelligently until the administration brought a plan and said, this is how we move out of the education center. And it involves how many of our buildings they had to find to do that.
So is, is, what, anybody else have any thoughts on how we, on what memo goes on the nineteenth?
Yeah, so Madam President, I think you've got consensus that, including Abbott loop, I don't think that the board needs to decide how the building is used as part of the memo on the nineteenth. But I think you've got consensus on Abbott loop. I, I went down the trail of potentially, and I had a conversation with Dr. Brian about maybe the combination of relocating to a smaller building plus increasing telework as an option to, you know, bring efficiency onto our footprint for district administration. I think that there's some complexities there, like the timing of when this lease for the education center runs out. And so I guess probably, probably the social work session. But I think you've got consensus there, I think.
PTR, I think there's consensus around PTR.
I think at least, at least one, there's consensus. I think you've got consensus on potentially eight percent fund balance. I think there's probably a few other things, and so perhaps maybe, you know, you're between the recording of the meeting and then administration's notes, maybe a memo can be compiled. I guess the, the one thing I would say about what we consider on the nineteenth is, I know at least my opinion could potentially change specifically regarding fund balance. You know, if we see a, a budget from the governor that, that doesn't include a BSA increase at all. I think we need to, I, the fifteenth, it's, yes, I think it's a law. I don't think it's, there's no conjecture in it. So by the fifteenth, we'll have that. But I think the dial that we use one-time funding needs to be attached to as, as best, the best information we can about a BSA increase. Because this, this shouldn't be just a one-year process. So I think those are kind of the, the consensus points. And then certainly, I think, you know, use, you know, make sure that that's published as soon as possible. And if there can be time to discuss it, a work session prior. But I think that there's ways to kind of brainstorm and provide some more time for conversation.
Any other comments? Member Donley?
Looks like I'm not in the majority on this, but I, I would hold off on the pupil teacher ratio, and, and I would have other items on my reducing expenditures list before I would go there.
Okay, Member Higgins?
I, I don't, from my standpoint, I'm not promoting that we have an increase in PTR. I just see this as a list of things that between now and July one, when we finally know what the BSA is, it gives us lots more options. So I'm not, I don't want to take it off the plate. And, but I, but I hope at some point that we will be able to remove it off the plate and try to move in some sort of direction that's better for kids. So I'm not, like I said, I'm not promoting that. But I'm leaving it on the table as reducing expenditures for, for the sake of argument until the legislature and the governor decide what BSA will be.
So I guess my question is, would this be one memo or several memos?
So could I offer a suggestion? Is that all right? So one thought I have is I'm taking notes, if I missed anything, let me know. But I think this is probably the most board guidance we've gotten at this level and probably since I've been here in seven years. And I think there's a consensus around the big things building. And I would offer a suggestion of, of perhaps one memo that combines the following things. And the memo is just stating publicly that this is the guidance that'll, that we'll look at to building the budget book. So if, the ones I wrote down would be, we would build the budget book around an eight percent fund balance. We would, the only school that would be on the closure recommended list would be the Abbott loop for now. That we would look at a PTR increase of one. And that we would approve all of the administration and operational cuts that were listed in the suggestion. We would look at ASDV at the K five level as a, as an elimination. And then the leftover that's less than forty-eight, we could use bond reimbursement or not to make forty-eight. And then everything else would just go into off the table for you to have that discussion about bond reimbursement. Or we could leave the bond reimbursement off, but we probably won't get to forty-eight with the one, two, three, four, five things listed. But.
Do your list again, I'm sorry.
I wrote down a pretty much unanimous consensus on eight percent fund balance, that'd be twenty-eight million. Abbott loop closure, a PTR increase of one, that was seven point one million.
Is that four twelve or K twelve?
I was doing K twelve because I heard that most often. Admin cuts and operational cuts, I didn't add that up, but that creates some more. The ASDV K five. And I don't, I didn't add that up, what that gets to, it's getting close. And then the left, the bond reimbursement could make up the difference or whatever other piece the board would offer.
Things that are on, that you didn't say on my list are six to middle, knowing we needed more data point.
That's, that was my point, we still have to do some research on that part.
All right, so we can, you say, just say that for now.
Yeah, I'm just saying, these would be the things you're, you'd be giving us guidance on. And we'll start moving on those things for the budget development. But then there's things we have to research. One of those is the six to eight model, what, what that would cost if, if we moved sixth grade, but we did not change the five to seven scheduling, what that would do. So we'll get back to you on that. What else is outstanding?
Immersion PTR.
The immersion PTR, add that one.
Could I just say that I, I am very interested in exploring some of Member Higgins's ideas regarding outsourcing, benefit administration, and possibly going out to bid for trying to get a better package for health insurance?
And, and yes, we agreed, but it won't be ready for, for February. It'll be ready by July one or as soon as possible. But we won't be able, we won't have that, that, that information by.
No, but in a way, that's a bit of an RFI. I mean, we could do some research and come back with a response to that suggestion.
Jim, did you have?
Was there anything else? Sorry.
Yes.
I, I just want to confirm that immersion was one of the things on your list. That, okay. And then the other, I guess, question, comment, I'm sorry?
The off the table, the dome contract? Oh, we don't need those, if they're off the table.
Yeah, if they're off the table, I don't need them. We're just, I'm trying to think of ways to package this so you're not voting on, giving us direction on, just, here's our understanding of today, and then you guys can debate it, but we'll put it all in memo form with all the details in it.
So the, the other portion of, of what I would like to see details on is the ASD virtual, not just K through five, but six through twelve. And I'd be interested in seeing deeper cuts in that, with the exception of I, information on, on specific credit recovery. But I would, I would be interested in seeing deeper cuts on that program.
And, and actually, the note affair is actually from me. I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to, I mean, I understand, I, I think we can re-figure how kids earn extra credit or make up credit. The grades that we, that were shared with us were actually disturbing. The grades that were shared with us in Board Connect were actually disturbing, especially for the upper grades. So I'm not sure what's going on with the program. It did serve an, an amazing purpose during COVID when we were trying to hold on to students and give them that, that virtual option. Families loved it once they had a little taste of it. But I think it's lost its, its, its luster. And I, I just need, short of, I, I mean, as I sit today, I want to cut the whole thing. But I will await more information.
No, I would just say the highest and best use of that program currently is the, the motivated students who are, and that's over two-thirds of the students in it that are trying to get ahead in their high, their college coursework. Or they're trying to take care of certain things so they can free up their schedule for other things. And these are singleton, these are not full-time students. The vast majority of them are people taking one course at a time. But we'll get some data, we'll have to research it.
Because I could, I could be persuaded. But I totally agree with the elementary. So you can put the elementary in there.
Okay.
But the, the seven twelve, I need more convincing.
Madam President, on that same subject, I would really like an examination of other options too to fulfill those needs. There's a Selus out there, there's Florida Virtual Central, that was a really successful program we utilized immediately when the pandemic hit. I mean, there are things out there that might, we might be able to backfill that are much more economical alternatives.
So if we lose an opportunity, we would have to look for another. Because I, I hear what you're saying, Dr. Stock, because the, the students are, some of our students are so self-directed. It would be a, it's the perfect thing for them. But the, let's just see what, I wanted to have more information.
Uh, uh, thank you. I, I, I guess I see this as a, a variable in fund balance or bond reimbursement. And in everything that it looks like we would agree to support being underneath it. And those would adjust based upon those votes. So if we didn't vote for, for the Abbott loop, we didn't vote for this, we voted for that, then we would just increase the amount that we took from the, um, uh, fund balance or, or the bond reimbursement. So we could have, these are the list of things you said you would consider, vote on them. And then we adjust those two other figures so that we get the balance. And we can do it that way relatively easy by leaving that open. Don't assume that the fund balance is going to go to eight percent, give it more flexibility. And after we vote on what we agree to cut otherwise, we know we can balance it using that.
But it looks like what, we, we're short for what's going to be in the memo. We will be, still be short, but we'll see.
But you have till February.
But we have till February. Remember last, okay, so we are ten minutes over, and let's go another five with final comments, please.
Yeah, right, this will be my final comment. I will say that I, listening to everybody, I have adjusted some of what I shared earlier. I think that we still have half forward. I'm okay with just going down to the eight percent fund balance and counterbalancing that with an increase of the cuts to ASD virtual. So I'd be interested in pursuing that route. And the one thing that I would add that I haven't heard discussed here is considering cutting some portion of the instructional coaches, maybe not the entire program. But I assume that they are both substantial state savings and also necessary classroom teachers to try to bring our PTR numbers, our, our classroom sizes down. So not, not, it's not exciting.
Is that your wild card?
That is a, that's a sticky note wild card, I ran out of wild card, so I just.
Really, I think, I think, I guess I'm uncomfortable identifying positions to be cut.
Yeah, and I, and it's, and I just, I, this is, I think that if each board member can, you know, put the sticky notes on the paper, that seems like a really useful thing for the administration to take and say, oh, how do these actually line up? You know, and you can do with them what you will. But I, I suggest we leave them as lasting.
Those are funded from different sources, so.
I think those are grants.
Those are all grants, so it's a good idea, but it doesn't really work.
Andy, I saw your hand, and then we'll take whatever other comments, and then we wrap it up. You guys have been great.
This sounds in a way like it, it potentially could work out and be much less catastrophic than we've all been thinking for a while. But I do think it's important that we remember and communicate to the public a big chunk of this is coming from reducing fund balance to eight percent.
Yes.
And so the following year, if we want to reduce it to eight percent, that doesn't really get us very far down the road at all. So it, it is, it is a hold and wait and see, to see what the legislature does. Otherwise, we really are back where we thought we were, and worse in twenty-four, twenty-five, for those of you that will be around that one.
Yeah, so if you guys can make sure your stickies are stuck on the, on the thing, on the paper, so we can have those, especially your wild card. Yes, Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I guess I'll reiterate something I said earlier and something Member Holloman touched on, that we get the, it, a BSA increase in and of itself doesn't necessarily solve our struggles for FY twenty-four and beyond. We received a BSA increase this year, or we will in FY twenty-four, thirty dollars. And that earned us an, essentially an extra two million dollars. And so, but there are legislators who, who see the BSA as something that's been recently increased and, and kind of have checked that off of their personal legislative priority list. And so how much the BSA increases next session will matter.
Um, and, and so the, well, I think that eight percent is a reasonable goal, that might need to be adjusted between, um, between now and February, frankly, depending upon how things progress. Um, the, um, the, the other thing that I think I appreciate is the staff time and energy that went into today. Thank you very much, appreciate, um, the resources and the time, and I'm looking forward to, um, kind of how the nineteenth goes and providing additional guidance. And, um, I agree in that we've identified early priorities, there's just so much still subject to change, thank you.
Thank you. And, and my only other closing, my only other comments are, I mean, we didn't get a lot of long-term work done today. Um, and that's fine. Uh, we will be back here next year because I, I'm, I'm hopeful, but I'm, I'm cautiously hopeful that the, uh, that we will get anywhere near what we need, uh, to balance our budget. Um, we are still missing five thousand students, and they're not going to magically reappear. So we are gonna have to deal with that, if not this year, certainly next year and the year after. Um, I think the, the process that we have used, uh, in being very transparent, has been, um, really, I, I, I'm really proud of, of what we have done in partnership with the administration and with the community, because, uh, they have, uh, they know exactly what we know. We're not pulling anything, um, we're not, we're not playing any card that hasn't been already seen, shown before. So I just want everybody to know, and staff, board members, these are tough times, tough decisions. Uh, we have, uh, we have a path forward, almost, not quite, but, and I love that we have wildcard. I love those wildcard, so thank you guys. Um, Member Wilson, and then Member Higgins, you're gonna wrap this up, Member Higgins.
Well, uh, first I, I thank the administration for being here, even if it was a draft situation, not volunteers. I know the sacrifice and I appreciate that. Second, I, I like this approach, I think we need to do it more often. It provides a dedicated time towards it, we can actually be talking about things without, um, uh, without the, with, with the flexible timing and to get things done. We got so many issues on academics and budget issues that this types opens up more discussions within that. So I just want to support this type of approach in the future and do it on a more frequent basis. It's never convenient, but it is beneficial.
Thank you.
It helps kids.
All right, bring it home.
I take it back, you could have wrapped this up. Um, I, I just wanted to say that all of this conversation and all of the, the administration has brought up, um, and, and, but we've had the opportunity to discuss is, is all extremely important conversation to determine that path forward, giving the board, administration and the, and the community time to plan, not just for this budget, but for future budgets. So I, I, again, I appreciate all the work that the staff has done, uh, to bring this information forward and continues to do, to answer all of the questions, and there are many. And, and I really appreciate the, the community's input in this process as well. Um, and I'll reiterate what board, uh, what our board president said is, is we aren't done with this process. So I appreciate this, this time.
Alrighty, so I see y'all taking pictures of y'all's sheets. Did you guys want the sheet?
If, if you would like to leave them, it's up to you, there, some of you may want to take them home or, uh, have them with you. And so either way, if you would like to leave them, leave them with Margot and we'll collect them.
Uh, and I do appreciate the, you know, we were able to stay at that twenty thousand foot level. We weren't, we didn't get too much in the minutia. Um, but I really appreciate all your input and your time on a Saturday. Thank you, guys. Move to adjourn?